We just have one more person to get on there, Aaron, I think.
So we didn't know.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready to begin. One, two, three. Yes, we're all here, everyone who's going to be here. Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for April 21st, 2021. In accordance with Executive Order N-2920, this meeting will be held via video conference and will be hosted on the Zoom platform. Public comment may be submitted via email in advance of the meeting or in an orderly process during the conference orally or via email or Zoom chat. Your comments will be included in the public record for the meeting and will be accepted at any time during the meeting. First item on our agenda is the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly is absent tonight, so Commissioner Johnson will be chairing the meeting. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Here.
Commissioner Hakenin?
Qualified here. I am here, but I'm at work, so I'm subject to going away at any moment, and when I can return, I shall.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stockness?
Present.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from March 17th, 2021. I was not at that meeting, so I'll abstain from concurrence of the minutes, but are there any corrections, clarifications, changes to the minutes? Diane?
Trevor, on page three of six, under Commissioner Discussion, it says Paul Hasselquist's applicant advised that he will work with the CCC staff to try to address their concerns. Can he do that?
Yeah, I thought about the wording of that. I mean, maybe.
I thought you had to do what?
He's gonna work with hit with the geologist to address the comments in their letter might be a better way to say it. I mean, he could. He could contact them directly, but I think the intent was really that he's.
So if he contacted them, if he contacted them directly, it's the office in Eureka, the person.
I I did suggest that his geologist contact the Coastal Commission geologist to try and, you know, directly get input from how on how to address those concerns. So it's it's probably okay as it is.
Okay, and then on page four of six, I don't want to drive down Scenic Drive, okay? So I'm not going to those sites. So how far down is 170 Scenic Drive, the Reiner project? Richard, maybe you can tell me.
170 Scenic is the last parcel that was that is in the city limits on Scenic Drive. If you drive down there, you'll notice that it's 170, and then the numbers completely change because you've crossed over to the Rancheria property.
Okay.
To try to give you an idea of where it is, it's it's literally on the border between the Rancheria and the city of Trinidad.
Okay, by one of those, one of those driveways into the casino?
No.
Second driveway?
It's a driveway that goes to the right-hand side down to the bluff.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll check it out later. I wanted to go over there. Um. Okay, let's see. Okay, so. And that one you did that one, Trevor, you doubled the permit fees?
That's correct, per the the policy that you guys just adopted recently.
Okay, because I was out of town during the meeting, you know, on my son's computer, and I had to leave, so I didn't get to do that project. Okay, so I read all the minutes. Okay, I have one more thing, page six of six. Okay, so. In your staff report, Trevor, which I missed, you talked about the issue of RV parks in town which are zoned as visitor services but seem to be currently used as long-term residence residences. So they don't, the city doesn't have a time limit on how long an RV can be on site. So the second or third to the last sentence said, in order to determine the city, if the city needs to rezone these locations, the city will likely need to conduct a study of visitor services in the greater Trinidad area. So I think we should suggest that to the city council because there's lots of cars parked outside of both RV parks that are close to me, the Hidden Creek and the trailer park on View and Main, and people are living in there. And the one under the bridge, right up from the bridge. So I don't know how we do that, but I just see it as a need to study visitor services, you know, so we don't have people living in cars or we're overcrowded in the RV parks because there's no place to put the RVs. You know, they come into town that want to stay for a weekend or stay for a week. You know, I mean, Patrick's Point State Park is already booked for the summer, so I don't know what what we can do, but I'm just thinking that the study might be a good idea. You know, after the parking study. Okay, I'm done. So what do you think, Trevor?
I, yes, I do think that we're gonna need to, you know, at least conduct an inventory of visitor services and probably try and get some occupancy data. And we will want to look at visitor services within the entire planning area, not not just Trinidad. That's not necessarily going to address camping in cars and overnight parking and that sort of thing. But it's it's a starting point to figure out what the next steps are.
So I would say like a little survey and give it to the manager of both visitor services parks, or maybe all of them, and say, okay, how many long-term residents do you have? How many people can come in and spend one night, two nights, a week? We need to know we're getting, you know, we're planning for visitor services because the Coastal Commission makes us do that. Because I'm concerned, and you know, it's right next door to Erin, and there are cars on both sides of View going to Maine, and I I'm afraid to go under the bridge and look at the other people in cars, just because it's been dangerous in the past. All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, I think I did not hear any changes to the minutes. So with that in mind, can we affirm that the minutes are approved?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. And I abstain. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. And basically, with the exception of the normal commissioner and staff reports, we have two items on the agenda, the A review and discussion of the ADU ordinance, and then a final wrap-up of the draft circulation element of the general plan update. Any changes or any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, item four, which is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who wishes to address an issue with the Planning Commission issues unrelated to the issues, to the two agenda items that we have on our agenda this evening. And we request that you keep your comments to thirty, excuse me, three minutes.
Okay.
My mistake there, sorry. Any comments from the public? I see Paula Levine.
Good evening. Uh, my interest in the planning department is how it interfaces with the issue of water. And which, what's the acronym, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and all the controversy that happened in the last few months? Can you shed any light on that, how the local planning the department interfaces with county planning? There was a tremendous amount of concern in the West Haven area of, well, you know all the concerns. I'm sure you watched the video. I assume that you're aware of it, you're members of the planning department. I yield my time.
Thank you. Customarily, during public comment, the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily address the specific issues. Otherwise, we just take them under advisement. However, in this case, I just will mention that, as you probably know, the city is in the process of of establishing a water contingency committee. And there is a representative from the Planning Commission that is on that committee, and they will be addressing all of the long-term as well as short-term, near-term water and drought issues for the city. Trevor, do you want to add anything to that at this point?
Yeah, I mean, it it's complicated. The Planning Commission did last year develop a drought contingency plan. The year before that, we developed some policies for you know, deciding on on hookup requests from outside city limits. We're working on the general plan update right now that has policies in regards to water. But then a lot of the infrastructure decisions are really made at the city council level, so the the Planning Commission is is more advisory. So it it sort of depends on the specific circumstances.
Yes, Paula?
Do you know which member of the planning department is going to be on the water advisory board at this point?
Yes, our Planning Commission Chair, Cheryl Kelly.
Cheryl Kelly.
Yes.
Who's not? Who's not here tonight?
She is not here tonight, yes.
Okay.
Right. Okay, any other? Diane, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Paula that the city council is going to get two water-paying customers to be on our water committee, our city water committee. So I don't know if Paula's in the area or what, but there's an application process for members, right, Trevor?
That's correct. So yeah, there's one or two water customers that will be on that committee. I think one from city limits and maybe one from the service area outside city limits. So yes, they are are looking for applicants for those positions.
Okay, again, once more, Paula?
Very quickly, I I already submitted my application. I've been a water-paying customer for 30 years. Plus, I paid $7,500 to hook up initially, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other public comment? Ona, good to see you, Ona.
Thank you. Good to see you. I really tuned in to hear your circulation element update, but I will take this opportunity that the the reason I'm in the Senior Regional Planner for the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, HCOG, for which Richard is on the SS TAC, Social Services Council. And we have to work to make sure our regional transportation plan is for the region and is also consistent with general plans and vice versa. So I want to learn about what's in your circulation element, and also let you know that HCOG is updating our regional transportation plan this year. It's a 20-year planning horizon, and we update it every four years. And we are working with a timeline that our board would adopt it in December. So just to let you know that if you want any specific questions or presentations, we are available. And then also, there is a new funding program from the state for regional early action planning, which is for accelerating housing production. And this new one-time pot of money is going through the COGS statewide. And so HCOG has started that, and part of that money will be going to education and training for for anyone. So your residents or potential homeowners, realtors, elected officials, commissioners. There's all kinds of training and workshops and webinars and educational things that we will have money to put into. So if that is also something you're interested in, let us know. There will be a lot of technical assistance coming direct from the state, but we also have a pot of money to have anything customized. And just want to let you know that that is in the works, and that is money that is available to us to spend until September 2023. And the county as a whole has by formula about $780,000. So thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Very informative. Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
I just to respond real quick. I don't think we'll be talking too much about the circulation element tonight, but if you look at the packet for the April 8th meeting on the city council agenda, you can find our current draft there. Mostly tonight, I think we're going to finish up with the water service area map is what we'll be looking at specifically tonight. But yeah, and I'd be happy to schedule a time, you know, maybe to to talk with you, Una, if you want to do that at some point.
Great. Nice to see you again after all these years, by the way, Trevor. Yeah, that was clear in your staff report. So I'm 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 not, I was not misled, understood that. Just wanted to tune in tonight. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is agenda item number one, which is ADU ordinance discussion and decision on amending the city's non-certified ADU ordinance to meet state housing laws and the Coastal Act while addressing local conditions and constraints. And just an editorial comment, I had no idea, Trevor, you were going to lead us into the great abyss of California bureaucracy. My goodness, but again, editorial comment. But if you could give us a staff report, please.
Yeah, I didn't really realize I was either when we when we originally developed our the ADU ordinance that the city adopted, but was not certified by the Coastal Commission, so it's not in effect. That was in 2012. We really basically just adopted the the state standards, and it wasn't wasn't too onerous. It it seemed pretty straightforward. And then but the law has changed quite a bit since then. It's like amendments every year, pretty much, that have been going on the last few years to restrict, limit restrictions on ADUs that local agencies can can adopt. And, you know, again, I thought it was going to be a little bit simpler to amend our ordinance and just, you know, add add the new state standards, but oh, man, it is, talk about it is some dense stuff, and it's got a lot of nuances and different standards apply in different circumstances. So, yeah, I do not have an actual revised ordinance to give you, but I gave you a notated version of the 2012 ordinance that that has some notations in it that sort of outlines the the current state requirements. And because Trinidad's in the coastal zone, we're in a little bit different position because the the state ADU law says it won't lessen anything in the Coastal Act, and because the city's zoning ordinance is certified by the Coastal Commission, it it's not affected by the state law, though, you know, I gave you the memos, the guidance memos from the Coastal Commission, so you can see they they do encourage the the city to amend its LCP. But I think this time it's not going to be just a matter of adopting the state standards. I I think they're a little bit too much for for Trinidad being, you know, the fact that we're all on septic systems, so allowing, you know, multiple ADUs per property is probably not really realistic. For one, and then I think the parking is also another one where we're we're gonna have to, we're not going to necessarily be able to meet the state requirement. So but I do think, you know, as we've talked about before, that that second units, and then I think the accessory dwelling units, and then in particular, this idea of junior ADUs, JADUs, where they're carved out of existing space, including a bedroom, and, you know, the kitchen can be very small efficiency type of kitchen. They can be small. The Coastal Commission doesn't even consider that development. And I think in talking with the Health Department, there's not necessarily septic upgrades required with that because you're using an existing bedroom. So I think that holds some real promise for for Trinidad. So at this point, I just wanted to provide you this introduction, start getting you familiar with the state law, and then the interactions with the Coastal Act. And, you know, sort of where where Trinidad's ordinances are deficient. Right now, we have a density limitation that says, you know, only one unit per 8,000 square feet in in most areas of the city, so basically, one unit per lot. Or, you know, in in different zones, it's different square footages. So, and the state law doesn't currently allow that. ADUs don't count towards the density, but because, again, because that ordinance is certified by the Coastal Commission, it's still in effect. So that's really the limiting factor in Trinidad that doesn't allow us to approve second units now. And so that's the primary thing that we need to figure out in order to start allowing second units. So tonight, I just want to answer questions and get some input maybe on on what you guys think makes sense for second units in terms of, you know, limitations or allowances, sizes, heights. You know, all those kind of things. I just want to get some input. So as I start or as I continue to amend the ordinance, I can incorporate your input.
Okay, thank you very much. I I'd just like to emphasize, excuse me, emphasize what Trevor was saying is that as she as she says at the end of her staff report, that think about appropriate size limitations, setbacks, parking requirements, et cetera. Those are the things I think that if we can address tonight, that would be very useful and helpful for staff to move forward. My editorial comment before about this huge bureaucratic mess is makes it a little difficult, I think, to try to go through all this information and come up with some specific questions. But whatever the commissioners would like to, or how you would like to proceed is perfectly okay. I guess what I would like to do is, as a matter of just kicking it off, while while I recognize some of the the intricacies of the specifics requirements, I guess, from a top-level standpoint, I'm a little bit confused as to what we need to do in terms of the process to fix all this, if you will, with certainly with respect to our already-approved LCP and how that play and how these new rules will play into whatever changes we need to make for the LCP. And 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 kind of what is the, what are the, what is a timeline and how do all these pieces fit together, and what do we have to do first in order to get this kicked off?
Yeah, those are good questions, Richard. Yeah, so this is this ordinance right now, for right now, is being funded by our SB2 grant, which, under the current contract, it runs out at the end of 2021. So it is one of our priorities to get through this year in terms of timing. You know, the, our previous ordinance wasn't certified because the Coastal Commission wanted a lot of information and analysis in terms of how development of of ADUs would impact coastal resources. And the three areas of concern were wastewater treatment, water availability, and parking. And so I think we have the, you know, we've done the analysis for water recently, and so I think, you know, the the numbers that we used in that water analysis might be a good guideline for, okay, we know we can accommodate, you know, this many ADUs because that's what we analyze in the water assessment. And so what what would that look like in terms of how many lots can have ADUs and you know, that that sort of thing. So that might be a good starting point to give us some guidelines. The the stormwater project and the groundwater model that was developed with the geotechnical investigations for that shows where, you know, and that also looked at at potentially ADUs and and build out of the city. And so we have the information to show that, you know, groundwater and existing septic system shouldn't be impacted. And then so parking is that outstanding piece of information. So we're working on the parking study, so we're not going to be able to finalize this ordinance right away because we don't have that information, but I think I think we have a good idea. You know, the the parking is an issue in Trinidad, and so the requirements, the limitations that you can't require parking for ADUs just might not work in Trinidad, so we'll keep that in the back of our mind. And I think, you know, definitely working more closely with Coastal Commission staff this time as as we amend the ordinance to see what what kind of additional questions or issues they might have. So I think it's just, you know, we're gonna work work through it periodically as as we have time in between, you know, permit approvals and general plan update and other things we've got going on through throughout 2021.
Okay, thank you. As I pointed out, you know, there's a lot of information here, and and I would certainly like to hear from how commissioners would like to address any questions. Maybe the best thing to do is individually, we can just ask our questions or ask for clarifications throughout the material. Some of it may be repetitive, but since there is so much information here, it might be the easiest thing if each commissioner kind of just hits the high high points of their concerns or questions, and then we. high points of their concerns or questions. And then we can see if we can crystallize a a plan for moving forward with Trevor at the end. So any of the commissioners that would like to start off, be my guest. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Stockton. You're on mute.
So thirty pages, Trevor, quite it's quite a lot. And that's just the state stuff. So I think you nailed it with adequacy of water, wastewater and parking. So I gotta go here and I'll tell you what page I'm on when I do that. Okay, so on page four, I like to send it's second paragraph. ADU shall give homeowners.
Man, I'm sorry, which document are you in? There's several.
I'm in the the first one, the state document. Page four, right after the the beginning.
Okay, thank you, the handbook. All right, got it.
So ADU shall give homeowners the flexibility to share independent living areas with family members and others, allowing seniors to age in places they require more care, helping extended families stay together while maintaining privacy. I think that's good because the state wants us to have housing, you know, and let the families or the seniors like me be with a family. Let's see. So Trevor, do we have to act? Sixty days if somebody has a request.
Yeah, so under the state law, if if a local agency does not have a compliant ADU ordinance, they have to follow the state standards. But we still have our certified LCP. So that that limits what what we can, we basically can't approve any al-almost none. There, maybe in the SR zone, we could potentially approve some under this ordinance, but we haven't had an application.
Okay, so I thought you said eight thousand and in the state, whatever the state units, it says eight hundred and fifty square feet or a thousand square feet. And they have to have a permit if it's over eight hundred square feet?
Yeah, so so what I was talking about was lot size and currently the state law that allows you to have a minimum lot size. In Trinidad, by default, that's gonna be dictated by septic requirements. So there is, we we may not say what the the minimum lot size is, but it's gonna be enough to accommodate the septic system that will accommodate the second unit. So you do have to have enough room for your septic system. The the eight hundred and the thousand are the ADU size limits. And so, you know, again, this is one of the sort of layers and nuances. So you have to allow these sort of state minimum standards and you have to allow them ministerially, which means it's an administrative approval. It's like a building permit. You you can't, if they can check all the boxes, you can't say no.
And who's gonna okay it? Are we gonna okay it or you?
No, no public hearing is required, so it would have to be me. But then if someone wants an ADU that say larger than those state minimum sizes, then we can require a a hearing and a permit for that.
Okay, so let's see what else here I had. Okay. It said page. Okay, so they, there, it says detached and attached ADUs. Okay, so do we get to make size limits on that or they just because of the lot?
Yeah, so and they're treated differently. So attached ADUs are treated somewhat differently as detached ADUs and then ADUs that are newly built are treat-treated differently than ADUs that are built from existing structure. So like, for example, a new ADU, you can put these size limits of of eight hundred or a thousand square feet. But if it's a new ADU within an existing accessory structure, like a garage or a barn, it can be as big as the accessory structure.
Okay.
The state law.
Okay, then page. And it says on page twelve, can ADUs be exempt from parking? So we can't, we can't make them say have one parking space off the street or on the driveway with the other two cars. So we can't do anything for parking?
Yeah, so there here's another area where there's several layers. So you can't require replacement of carport or garage spaces, but you can require one space per unit for an ADU, but not if you're within a half a mile of a bus stop. You cannot require parking if you're within half a mile of a bus stop, which is a lot of, you know, ocean view. Where it's very dense. So and where there are parking problems. So and I think that's, you know, that's one of those areas where, you know, we're we're gonna have to balance, you know, local conditions, public access, coastal resources and the state ADU law. And I'm I'm thinking that, you know, ma-maybe we will require parking. So that's one.
Parking permits or parking permits?
An onsite parking space. So they have to provide parking on their lot as opposed to, you know, having them people park on the street or assuming they're not gonna have cars.
Okay, so my next question is page thirteen and it's about setbacks. Okay, so that's really touchy, the setback thing. Front corner, street alleys, you know, we already have some issues, you know, over by the the trailer park with setbacks. So would the neighbors be noticed if there was an ADU going in? And they could give their feedback about, you know, setbacks? And, you know, if if they're gonna put one in, they can't put it on the other people's property and it's supposed to be five feet, right? Or is it fifteen now?
Oh, there are, I think, you know, buildings have to be ten feet apart, I believe. But I'll I'll check with the building inspector on that because the state law says you can't require more than four feet setbacks in the rear and the side. Currently in Trinidad, we have in the UR zone, we've got five on the side and fifteen in the back. So, yeah, I think that is another area where, you know, it's gonna take some discussion in terms of what is appropriate for, you know, is is four feet gonna impact the character of Trinidad? Or or really, is it gonna impact coastal resources? Because we can't, we can't not follow the state law unless it's a coastal act issue. It can't just be because that's what Trinidad wants. But I think setbacks is something that we're gonna need to look at. You know, I think there's a lot of garages, for examples, that that don't meet the rear setback. They're right on the alley. And those can be converted under the state law. An existing, an ADU created in an existing structure doesn't have to meet setbacks. It's fine where it is. And I think our our old ordinance had that provision in it as well. But, yeah, I think setbacks is an area that we're gonna have to talk about. In terms of public noticing, it's a little weird because the provisions say it's not gonna affect anything in the coastal act except that public hearings aren't required. So if you looked at those memos from the coastal commission, they talk about, you know, what, a little bit, what is development? So anything that requires a a septic system upgrade is gonna be development, is gonna require coastal development permit, which means you have to notify the neighbors, but you don't have a public hearing. And so if the neighbor, but if the neighbors don't like it, it's a ministerial approval. So you're just notifying them. They don't get to.
This is gonna be an issue. I mean, big time. This is gonna be a big time issue. And if the ADU in that already constructed garage or carport is on the alley, then there's no room for parking. Because they block block the alley. So anyway, I was trying to figure out how you could notice the neighbors just because I think it's the decent thing to do in our neighborhoods here in Trinidad. But I didn't know what the legality was of that. Okay, I'm gonna quit for a while, Richard. Let somebody else. Thank you, Trevor.
Commissioner Hopkins, Commissioner Hackenin? I did it right yet?
I can, I did have a couple of things. So, yeah, the bus stop thing, that was on my list. So that's taken care of. I think most of town obviously triggers that exemption. The thirty day limit that it mentions, Trevor, is that an automatic requirement? Or is that something we would have to decide for a minimum, you know, rental period?
Oh, um, yeah, I think that's written so that, well, I think there's, in certain circumstances, it has to be at least thirty day rental. And then I think in another circumstance, it's, the city can require it to be a thirty day rental. And and I'm guessing that that's the direction this Trinidad would wanna go anyway because we want, we want these to be affordable housing. We don't want them to be short term rentals.
Sure, okay. And then I also thought I saw the document, one of the documents, and I can dive for it if not, but that parking was okay within the setback space? That that's allowable under the law? Is that correct?
That's correct. And currently, that's fine in Trinidad. We don't, it's, our setbacks are really just for structures, not parking. And and we currently allow tandem parking, which is, you know, one vehicle behind another. So we're we're already compliant with that.
Are there any ADU type things that would trigger an intensity of use change? The way I read it, it didn't sound like anything within this does that necessarily.
Yeah, well, adding, adding a new unit, adding a new bedroom, adding a new unit with a new kitchen, and then any changes to the septic system. Those are all all things that require that that would constitute development. Now, we might be able to come up with some some waivers for some of those. You know, Trinidad's ordinances differ a little bit from the coastal act in that Trinidad requires design review for any structural modifications where in the coastal act, you can modify an existing house and it's not development, as long as you're not adding bedrooms or altering the septic system. So there are some things that Trinidad, we could consider as as a waiver or an exemption, even if they meet the definition of development. But I don't, you know, and this is gonna really change how we review septic systems a-as well. Currently, I don't require coastal development permits for septic system repairs. I guess these are really upgrades, though, because you're you're adding bedrooms, you're intensifying the use. Yeah, so it's really a septic system upgrade and and that requires a coastal development permit.
And then in your staff report, middle of the page two or towards the top, you talk about the city may want to provide for the minimum for state regulations, but then allow additional under the state laws. Are you able to, as you're working through this kind of pull together, something that would reflect what the minimum kind of standard is? And then kind of what that would look like? And and did I understand you that we currently don't have any approved ADUs within the the city?
We have we have quite a few legal non-conforming ADUs in the city. So they were converted and and we don't have great records. So, you know, the status of some is is probably questionable. But if they were converted before nineteen eighty, when our ordinance was certified, then we consider them legal non-conforming.
And with this, though, how does, how are those impacted? So, for example, you said somebody that has an existing detached structure, garage shed, whatever, converts it. In the old days, that could have been considered illegal, non-conforming, if I understand that definition correctly. Now, it's just, it's an approved ADU potentially, right?
Well, be since our, since the the current zoning ordinance was certified by the coastal commission, it would have been illegal.
Okay.
And then in in our twenty twelve ordinance, we had some provisions. If you had an illegal ADU, you could come to the city and get it.
Right, within that timeframe, right?
Yeah, legitimized. And so I think, you know, the the state, that's something I don't fully understand about the current state law is there are some restrictions on, someone can request deferment of enforcement for five years. I don't totally understand that.
Yeah, it looked like that was while they tried to bring it up to standard, right?
Yeah. And as long as, you know, health and safety issues are addressed. So, so, yeah, and I think that's where, you know, people, we've been allowing people to convert accessory structures into additional living space, but they just can't have a kitchen, basically. But they can be an extension of of the house. And so what I see happening is those sorts of spaces, people are gonna wanna add little kitchens to them and and make them second units. But that's not necessarily adding a bedroom. So I I think that kind of thing should be pretty, pretty doable.
Well, that's all. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hopkins, any questions, comments, considerations?
Yeah, I was thinking that septic was really gonna be the primary limiter on this. And and if I'm not mistaken, you said that in the maps the maps that you spoke of, the stormwater and the geotech maps, they do show some potential for septic or areas or that spells it out a little bit?
A little bit, yeah. And I I think we'll wanna look at that map. So how they mapped it is it really, those maps are geared towards low impact development, LID, so infiltrating your stormwater. But it also applies to septic systems as well. So there are areas of the city where, you know, you can really just infiltrate a lot of water and it's not gonna, it's not gonna raise groundwater levels. And it's not gonna affect slope stability. Those were kind of the two main issues. So you don't wanna raise the groundwater levels so that it would then affect people's leach fields. And then you don't wanna affect slope stability, obviously. So we sort of have three areas designated in those maps. We have one where infiltration is is fine and should be encouraged. And that would also apply for ADUs. We have areas that are closer, generally those along the bluff edges where infiltration would be discouraged or would require additional studies. And then there's areas that were outside the city stormwater system that they didn't include in the model. So those would require additional studies to see if if infiltration would it would impact the site.
Very good.
But, yeah, I, you know, as septic is really the, you know, wa-water is up there too, but septic is really the limiting factor for for density in in Trinidad.
And if there's no water, Trevor, to the ADU, you know, the primary resident has, but then do they pay a hookup fee or what?
Yeah, so those are, again, the state law limits. You can't require separate connections and meters in most instances for ADUs. So, you know, you can, they'll pay for their water, but it's not the So you, you know, you can, they'll pay for their water, but it's not the, you know, there's not a hookup fee, there's not a separate meter, and so they're not paying the sort of minimum monthly fee. It's just the additional amount of water.
Okay, so the, they pay the plumber and they put in the pipes? Okay, but we're not, are we talking kitchen in these units, too, or not?
Yeah, um, you know, there, there's, there is defined sort of a, an efficiency kitchen, I think, for the eight, the junior ADUs. And, yeah, it has to have a, a counter and sort of food prep area, and it has to have some sort of cooking facility. It doesn't have to be a stove or an oven, I don't think. But it doesn't actually have to have a sink, even. So it can be pretty, pretty minimal. And, you know, we, we've approved, you know, we've defined wet bars and approved wet bars in detached accessory structures, and, and those would be ADUs a- as they are, u- under this law.
Okay.
And, and is it, can it be limited? Like, say if somebody wants to build one, I realize they can't go over the height of the existing structure and all that, but if it's going to be blocking the view, is there a way that we can stop? I mean, can the, the neighbor stop that? Or is that the whole crux of the whole thing?
That is, that's one of the cruxes, and that's, you know, that might be a sticky point, because the Coastal Act doesn't protect private views. Trinidad does, obviously, and it's a, it's a major issue. We can limit ADUs to 16 feet in height. And then any new construction that adds on to an existing single-family residence. Well, I'll have to look at how we can limit that. But yeah, I think, you know, that's, that's one of our potential issues that we're going to have to reconcile. But I, I think, you know, for the, the 16 feet in height is probably-
Enough.
That's probably, that's not going to impact people's views, most likely.
Anything else, Tom?
Um, I was curious in the, with the STRs, there, there are certain zones, and I have, I'm not familiar with it, but I was thinking maybe that was due to septic and impacting, you didn't want to have too much short-term rentals due to septic and parking. And would that be something as a model that we could use for the ADUs?
I think we could. The, the STRs was a little bit different purpose. It was, we, we capped them in the residential zones, because we wanted to maintain, you know, residential neighborhoods as, as residential areas. And then did not cap them in the zones where commercial uses or mixed uses and, and other types of uses are allowed. This, I think, would be a little bit different purpose, but yes, the, the state law does allow you to, you know, limit ADUs in certain areas and allow them in others, based on things like services, water, sewer, traffic, parking, those sorts of things. And, you know, the trouble with Trinidad is that it's so small. You know, if Trinidad were part of a larger jurisdiction, they probably wouldn't allow ADUs in central Trinidad. You know, and allow them in, in other areas of the city. But Trinidad is so small, you know, I don't know if the state would, you know, if we just allowed them, for example, in the SR zone, where the lots are bigger, would the state consider that as complying with the state law? I think we'd have to show that in other zones, it would have more impacts. But yeah, I think, I think in the denser zones of, of town, we may need to put limits on, you know, the number, the size, that sort of thing.
One more point. I, I heard last time something about, or one of the last meetings about potentially annexing more area to the north. And, I mean, that, this would be prime for that, as I see it.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't necessarily want to advocate, be an advocate for annexation. The city hasn't expanded in a very long time, but the more, you know, the, through, through looking at, at this stuff, you know, the stormwater and ASBS stuff, the MS4, the general plan update, the Coastal Act requirements, I'm just not sure Trinidad, at this size, is really sustainable. You know, it, it takes a lot of work to meet all these state requirements. And so, and, and it's difficult for the city to find, you know, members for the city council and the planning commission and the fire department and committees. And so, yeah, I think, I think that the city is really going to need to seriously look at expanding both for, for population. And then the, the northern area is, it's not currently served with water, but it's commercial and visitor services. So that could go a long way towards providing the city's share of visitor services. It's, and it has huge tax generating revenue potential, that northern area. It's just that the, the water demands, the potential water demands are also very high up there. And, and our water supply is limited. So, but yeah, I think annexing, you know, say, Lanford Road, you fill in that little area between the ranchery and the freeway and the city, that seems like a prime kind of location for annexation. And then that gives you additional housing opportunities to meet state requirements, too. So, so yeah, I think annexation has, has some potent, a lot of potential benefits. But it's, yeah, it's not a simple decision or process.
The, the water committees, I think everybody's just looking at the city, but that's not really been in the equation of, like, potential, a potential annexation. And that, that could, couldn't possibly be put into the equation at some point.
Yeah, well, we did, so, like, the, the water service area map that we looked at with the circulation element and the water service areas divided up into subareas. And so we actually did, for example, we calculated water demand for each of the subareas so that, and, and that, you know, to help inform the potential for annexation. So what, what areas could the city potentially annex and, and have the water to, to serve?
Great, nice to hear. Thank you very much.
Okay, I just have a couple of, I guess I'll call them top-level questions, or just see if we can get some clarification, Trevor. So we, we haven't approved LCP presently. And I believe I read somewhere in here that if you have an approved LCP, that you don't necessarily need to have an ADU ordinance. So can you give me kind of the rationale as to why we would want an ADU ordinance if we could rely on the state requirements that we already have a, a, an approved LCP?
Yeah, so, I mean, one, you know, the, I think the city, you know, made a decision a number of years ago that, you know, we wanted to be able to allow ADUs as a form of affordable housing in Trinidad, or more affordable housing, I should say. So there's that. And then, and then there's also, but, but the state, the state has just gotten stricter and stricter and stricter. And even the Coastal Commission is starting to, there are some provisions in the Coastal Act for providing and protecting low and moderate income housing in the coastal zone. And with our housing element update, you know, we, the, the city ha- has to now comply with those, and you've got those regional housing, the RENA allocations. So the city has to, you know, be able to provide for, you know, whatever, 18 new housing units in the next five years. We have to show that, that we have the regulations and the land to allow that. And so adopting an ADU ordinance was part of our housing element. It was part of meeting the, those RENA numbers. And then I think, you know, if we tried to take our general plan update, our LCP update to the Coastal Commission and didn't allow ADUs, I, I'm not sure they would, you know, go, go for that. I think they would want us to see some, some, some form of allowance for, for these as well.
Well, yeah, I, I certainly appreciate that. I, maybe I misinterpreted what I read, but that, that's fine. We're kind of locked in, I guess, if you could say, at this point, with an ADU ordinance. But having, having said that, but do you see that we will have to do an LCP amendment as a result of this? And if we do, is that perform, is that process after we complete the general plan update? I, I'm trying to get a, a, once again, an appreciation of the timeline and what's, what are the steps we got to go through and the gates we have to go through to make this happen?
Yeah, so it would be, you know, a, a new chapter of, as how it was written before, it'd be a new chapter in the zoning ordinance, just like the STR ordinance, and it would need to be certified by the Coastal Commission. The timing is really up to the city. You know, if we, working with Coastal Commission staff and we get through this, this year, and we all feel good about it, you know, we could some, submit it as a standalone ordinance to the Coastal Commission for certification. Or, you know, there might be reasons to, to wait for the general plan update to be finished.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing is that it's pretty much up to us that there's not a fixed set of gates that we have to go through in a specific order. We're, we're just going to have to kind of figure out what is the most efficient way to, to put this together.
There, there are some timelines. There's some, some timelines included in the housing element-
Oh, yeah.
-for it. And, you know, I, you know, if the city doesn't meet those timelines, you know, I, I think the housing element recognizes that those timelines are contingent on Coastal Commission approval. We can't dictate how long it takes the Coastal Commission to do anything. And so that's recognized in there. And I, I just don't, I think it'd be nice if the city could show due diligence, that we've made progress. And then I think HCD wouldn't do anything. You know, I don't, I don't think there's anything they can do to find the city yet, or, you know, really come down on the city punitively. But that, those laws are changing, and they are getting more strict. And someday, there could be penalties if we don't meet our housing goals, for example.
Okay, thank you. Just, just two more questions real fast. And the first one, I think I know the answer, but I was a little perplexed that this 30-day minimum rental issue was not expanded on a little bit more. And my concern is, and maybe I'm being paranoid, but it would seem to me that somebody could take advantage of this whole process to get a real quick ADU in place, rent it for 30 days, and then if the, if there was an opening under the cap for an STR, that they could immediately turn it into an STR as opposed to an ADU. So what, what's your interpretation? Do you think that, that, that obviously this was intended to be a continuous period of rental, but I didn't see anything that says that you have a, a minimum number of 30-day periods that you need to do that? Or, or how do we handle that? Or can we do that ourselves?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and somewhere in the code, it talks about the, you know, kind of covenants and restrictions. And, and so we can, we can put a deed restriction on the property, for example, that, you know, runs, runs with the land, that says it will be a, a minimum 30-day rental.
Well, that, that, that's fine, I guess. And like I said, maybe I'm being a little paranoid, but it, certainly you could do it for 30 days, and then if, once you're done with your 30-day period of, of rental, then what's to prevent them from turning it into a, an STR? That, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
I, I think we could word a deed restriction so that it's a ongoing, you know, minimum 30-day rental.
All right.
And it's part, it's part of the primary residence. So we're-
Not necessarily. That, that, that's the whole point.
Yeah, it's a, it's a separate residence. It can be rented separately.
Oh.
Yeah.
The-
Oh, I guess it can't be sold separately. That's what I was thinking. Right, okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. And then my, my last question is, and I certainly appreciate the fact that we don't have an ordinance in front of us, of course. But just what is your kind of goal for having a, a draft ADU ordinance for review? Yuck, yuck.
Yeah, again, I, I wasn't necessarily planning on, on working on this quite yet. We have a little bit more time, but I'm glad I did start working on it, because it is a little bit more complex than I thought it was going to be. You know, the, at the next meeting, you know, we're going to have the Civic Club project. I don't know about Hasselquist. So, you know, I think it's just something that we want to keep, keep, you know, keep working on, keep at, you know, little, even if it's biting off small pieces, you know, maybe, maybe we focus on, you know, one or two sections at the next meeting. So, you know, looking at maybe just size and setbacks, or, you know, something like that, and, and work through it that way, section by section. That might be a good way to tackle it.
Oh, oh, okay. So with that in mind, I, I guess I misunderstood. The SB2 contract or grant, excuse me, the SB2 grant that we have, which is funding the ADU ordinance, right? That, that ends in the end of 2021?
That's correct.
So by definition, you're saying you would like to have it done by the end of the year?
As far as we can get, yeah, let's, and, and, you know, we didn't commit to having it necessarily in place. I think we did say we wanted it adopted, but it wasn't, you know, we can't guarantee anything from the Coastal Commission. So it wasn't necessarily going to be in place. So I do think that to get, you know, the final disbursement of funding, we'll want something adopted. I'd have to look at the contract again. But, but yeah, let's, because it's something really the city needs to do anyway, so let's spend that money while we have it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I, I know there may be some other questions or comments from commissioners, but I, I would like to open it up for public comment at this point. And then we can come back with, if we have any other questions or comments after public comment. So at this point, I invite or encourage anybody from the public who would like to make comments on our discussion on ADUs. This is the point where you can do that. Again, I would request that you limit your comments to three minutes, if possible. Thank you. Any public comment? Paul?
May I make a comment about your discussion on annexation?
Sure.
Do you consider Mill Creek North of Trinidad, is, is that a potential area that you might think about annexing? Or is it just up Stagecoach?
Well, I'm not familiar with, when you say Mill Creek, you're talking about, could you maybe give us a little bit more information of what you mean? Maybe it's just me.
That's up by the, that's up by the quarry, right? That's off Quarry Road?
Correct. It's in the sphere of influence.
Yeah. So yeah, that would be an area that the, that the city, you know, there have been no official discussions about that. And like I said, it would be a, a long discussion, a long process, if the city ever did want to consider that. But yes, it, it is in the sphere of influence, and so it is an area that the city could consider annexing in the future.
I, I think that's the comments that you made when, when I put my thumbs down on it. I'm, I'm a resident of Mill Creek. No offense to Trinidad and the bureaucracy in Trinidad.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any other pertinent questions or clarifications that we need from Trevor at this point? Any, any direction that we would like to provide to her? Commissioner Stockness.
So Trevor, I think we, or you look at the state requirements for affordable housing, pick the main things out of that, and then let's do the height, the setbacks, the parking, and try to make it simple. You know, and then it's, you know, going to be what, what's available? Would you even know what lots would be available for that? I mean, we don't need to pick them out and advertise it, but I mean, because you've been here twenty years, you know, the, the lots and what's a lot on the lot. I mean, what's on the lots? Is it a carport? Is it a garage? Is it a shed? So what, we have to have eight? We have to satisfy the state with eight parcels or eight possibilities? Was that the number?
I think it's eighteen and, and we do have that currently. But, you know, realistically, you know, we don't even get one new house a year in, in Trinidad. So we're not going to meet that. But, you know, hopefully we can meet the state requirements in other ways by, you know, I think, I think we're not, you know, we're not going to get that kind of development on new lots. Maybe we could get that many ADUs. I don't really see that happening in, in five years, but it, at least it's, you know, going towards meeting the state requirements. But I, it's, it's hard to judge. Because the, the septic requirements and it's hard, you know, what, you know, because the, the size is going to be based on, you know, percolation rates on an individual site. You know, there are now, you know, there's starting to be more advanced treatment systems and pre-treatment systems that might, you know, maybe you could make a leach field smaller and still treat the same amount of water because you've got these new technologies. So that might be something that changes. So it's really hard to predict what, what lots. But I mean, I imagine that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, on the Trinity to, to View Avenue area, those lots probably don't even average eight thousand square feet and the lot coverage is, is pretty high. So I, you know, I think it's a limited number of them that would be able to, you know, expand or, or upgrade their, their septic system to accommodate an ADU.
Okay, so what about manufactured homes in trailer parks?
Yes, that can be housing. Now, currently the RV parks are zone visitor services. So you can only have a caretaker residence. But manufactured housing in, in Trinidad, we currently allow manufactured housing to be a single family home. There's a couple up on Berry Road that have been put in, that, you know, they're built on regular foundations. And, and manufactured housing can be ADUs. The RV parks is kind of a, a bigger question that we're working through in terms of is that housing? Should it be housing? Can it count as housing?
We need to, we need to survey that.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're working on that.
Okay.
I've been, I've been talking to HCD and the coastal commission about what to do with those. And I, I am going to contact the owners and talk to them as well.
Okay, I just thought if there was a, it said in the state packet that manufactured homes could be ADUs. So, okay.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments, questions from commissioners? Commissioner Hopkins?
I just, when I read this, I, I mean, I was kind of impressed at the solar and the handicap and all this. And then I ran into a person who's trying to find a rental and they're trying to get HUD or they have HUD, HUD requirements. And I kind of thought, wow, that it's, this is what it's geared for. These people, you know, they can't, this guy couldn't find a place anywhere, you know, trailers aren't going to work and all that. And so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Yeah, I know it's a pain and we'll try to figure it out, but it does serve a good purpose.
Thank you.
Just one quick, I guess in the form of a direction or request. I do really like Trevor, your suggestion of taking small bites out of this and kind of having it as an ongoing thing. It's a very, it was a fascinatingly overwhelming documents packet for this week that you sent for me to dive through since I picked it up on Friday or, or last week. So I think small chunks make it feel manageable. And I know that'd be a great way to go, you know, with so many things we have to line up. Like that's a brilliant plan.
Good comment. Anything else? Okay, hopefully we've given you a little bit of direction and we look forward to seeing small chunks of this in the future. I think that's a great idea and I'm sure more to come on that. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, which is the general plan update, specifically a discussion on the draft circulation element, including the coastal commission staff comments and responses. And this is a continuation from our April eighth meeting. Trevor, I'll turn it over to you for brief staff report.
Yeah, so I'm happy to take any additional comments or questions that you thought of on the document itself. But I think where we kind of left off was the, the water service area map and trying to decide really what the boundaries of, of the water service area should, should be. You know, and and Richard, you had mentioned you wanted to look at the new LAFCO map. So I provided that in, in your packet. So you can kind of see, so that, so their, their water service boundary is based on this, this latest figure five from the general plan update. But then a couple of things that have come up more recently is, you know, that, you know, Baker Ranch already has a water line and a hydrant going through it, even though none of those houses are served. Yeah, I think that northern area is, you know, I think at some point, maybe not tonight, but I, we might consider shrinking that. Because there's that, if you recall, when we did the, the cow fire, the LCP amendment for, for cow fire to give water to their station, the coastal commission added language that we can't serve anyone else outside city limits. We have to reserve enough water for that northern service area before we give anybody else water. And by, by some measures, we already don't have enough water to serve that entire area. So does that mean we can't connect anyone else? And so shrinking that area might be something to think about. I'm not sure we have the data in front of us right now to do that. But that's one thing to think about. Now, that language wouldn't apply if the city were to annex an area because then everybody in city limits gets preference automatically. But yeah, so, so yeah, I just wanted to finish our discussion on the water service area and whether we should leave as, as it is or expand it anywhere or shrink it anywhere.
Okay. Comments, questions, clarifications from the commissioners? I'll, I, I'll kick it off with just a couple of comments. In looking at the LAFCO city of Trinidad overview figure, there, there seems to be some inconsistency between what they show as the water service area and what we show on figure five. And, and the, the, the other thing which is a little confusing to me also is that the city boundaries, particularly in the harbor area, seem to be different than the water service area map. And, and so while I think that those are easily correctable, or maybe it's just oversights that need to be cleaned up, I'm a little worried that we don't have a consistency between the two maps, meaning the, the LAFCO overview map and our water service area in figure five. And, and if I could just be a little bit more specific, if you look, uh, let's see, like I said, down in the harbor area, I've never seen this city boundary that's shown on the LAFCO map before. I've never, I've never seen it go out that far. And I don't know if that's a, an issue or not. The other, the other concern is, and I don't remember, Trevor, help me, figure one, which I think was going to be in the land use section, land use element. That also has a different water service area, I'm sorry, has a different, yeah, water service area profile than either of the other maps. So, and, and what I'm specifically looking at is down around the city water plant. On the figure one, there's kind of this U-shaped saddle that's up there next, next to the city water plants. And that is not on either of the other maps. So I don't know if that's overcome by events. It was an old picture or not, but my, my, my point is that there seems to be a number of inconsistencies between these maps. And I'm getting a little worried that it's, it's going to be a little difficult to make sure we know which one is someone we should be looking at. And let's see. And, and, and I will make one more comment about the Baker Ranch issue, the Baker Ranch area. This is the only region in the entire water service area that has Trinidad water infrastructure outside of the water service area. And my concern would be, particularly if you look at the way the water mains are routed in that area, it would be very easy for the city to abandon that, that line, including the fire hydrant. And that would be a real disaster for residents of Baker Ranch because they rely on that for lower insurance requirements. And we would not have any real robust firefighting capability. So I, I, I guess my point in bringing that up is that I would love to have some sort of assurance that, that the city understands that they still need to maintain that line and that fire hydrant. And that that would be a real disaster if they decided to abandon that. So I just wanted to reiterate, make that point. Make that point because that is the only, that is the only part of the water main that is not inside the water service area for the entire area. So those are my comments. Any other commissioner comments?
So who, who would make that decision, Richard or Trevor? The public works?
Well, I mean, I think it's partially up, up to us right now. You know, I think that's a good point. I think
It's a real good point.
I, yeah, I don't see the city abandoning that line, although I suppose if the rancheria got Humboldt Bay water and they don't need city water anymore, maybe. But, but part of, you know, the water system does require loops and redundant, you know, kind of the, these looping systems, which is sort of, you know, what happened over at Van Wick, is, is the loop got cut off. And so they lost water pressure. And so, you know, I'm guessing that that is, you know, that's, it's important for the water system, but I, you know, I don't know. You know, it, it's not an area, I don't think that the city would ever, I don't see it being annexed since the rancheria is located between it and the city. But yeah, it might make sense to, to have that in, in the, at least part of that northern area of the Baker Ranch in, in the city's water service area. And in terms of the mapping, Richard, I, I think I, looking at LAFCO's map, to me, it looks the same water service area as what's in that figure five that doesn't include Baker Ranch. And I think I actually gave them that GIS file. So it should be exactly the same. The other figure that you're looking at is the current service area. So that's the currently mapped service area. Yeah. And it includes those parcels, those parcels up Luffenholz. And I guess, what is that Fox Farm there? And I just, they're so far away from West Haven with no main lines going up there. I don't, I don't see them ever being served. So I took them out. There's also some parcels up you know, by, by the quarry, Quarry Road, and those are designated as ag or timber. And they're not designated for residential development. So I took those out. And, and also the parcels west of, west of Scenic Drive, I think are also not developable. So those should come out. But area F from that water demand assessment, you know, is, is, is currently in the water service area.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, that, exactly what you've just said. And I, and I understand that. I, I was just looking at what I thought was a change in the city boundaries down by the harbor.
Yeah, no, it's funny because I didn't, when I saw the LAFCO map and I reviewed this, I wasn't even looking at city boundaries. I was looking at the sphere and the water service area.
Right.
You know, they've, they've always had that as their city boundary. And I don't know where they got it. But no, I think we've, we went, did some research on what's shown on our maps, our general plan maps. That's, that's what's in city limits.
Okay, well, let, let's see how it all rings out here. But yeah, those, those are my comments on the, on the on the map. Any, any other commissioner comments before I, go ahead, Commissioner Hackit?
Um, your, your question about Baker Ranch triggered a, a question for me. Obviously, I completely agree. We can't abandon that, that fire suppression system there without there being a replacement. Should that happen through the ranchery or something else? I just had a question. If we include them in the water service area and by drawing these boundaries as we move them around, does it trigger anything with our obligation to provide service within those boundaries? Knowing that you had said earlier that we have an obligation apparently to provide in the northern part of, you know, if we draw the bubble bigger, are, or does that, you know, increase our obligation and therefore water demand from a residential standpoint?
No, not necessarily. So the, really the city can't serve that area unless it's going to annex it anyway. Or unless, you know, if there were a public health and safety, you know, someone's well got contaminated with a septic system or something like that, then the city could consider extending water without annexing. That area is currently in the city's service area. It's just not, not served with, with water lines or, or individual connections except for that fire hydrant. And I think part water lines or, or individual connections except for that fire hydrant. And I think part of the reason that's there is because that's the line that serves the rancheria.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I think, you know, if we took it to you know, one, two, three, four, you know, maybe those northernmost six parcels. And include that in the service area because again, it's not an area that, you know, we're, when we developed our water policy for connecting, you know, for evaluating hookup requests from outside city limits, we really tried to prioritize areas that the city might annex in, in the future. And so, you know, again, that's an area that I don't see the city ever annexing. But because there's city infrastructure in there, it would make sense to include that northern section in the service area.
Is that the Landford area?
That's the Baker, Baker Ranch.
Oh, the Baker, okay.
So, uh, yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll leave it, maybe you can kind of think about it, Trevor, the best way to handle it. I think from my perspective, as long as there is some notation saying that this is city infrastructure serviced by the city or something to the, that denotes that even if it's just on the map, that would be fine. I just want to make sure that it's clear that that city infrastructure, even though it may not be in the water service area. And, uh, like you say, it, it's almost totally unlikely that that would ever be annexed. Okay, um, what I'd like to do at this point, uh, we can come back and ask any other questions. I like to open it up for any public comment on, uh, this agenda item, which is the circulation element. Uh, final discuss, not final, but a discussion on the circulation element and the, and the, uh, water service area map. Any public comment at this point? Mr. Line?
Are these maps available in the files in the city?
Yes. There are hard copies available in the, uh, town hall. And they are also, actually, the, the maps are much easier to see and understand on the city website.
Okay, thank you. And it's my understanding there's a moratorium now on no hookups. Is that true? Because of the, um, questionability of and the amount of water available going into this summer.
I would have to, Trevor, I, I, I believe there is, but I am not absolutely certain as to the official status.
I don't recall that the city council adopted anything official. But did they? I can't remember if the city ca- I, uh, so the city council, though, never actually officially approved the connection policy that we developed for evaluating hookup requests from outside city limits because they wanted the drought contingency plan. So, and then they, they actually haven't even officially adopted that either because then we need an ordinance. So, so I think it's kind of in limbo. There's not in a moratorium per se that I know of.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I'm, I'm not sure that there's an official one at this point, but I know that, uh, with the issue related to supplying water to the Trinidad Rancheria, the additional water that was requested. And with the, with the intent of trying to deal with the, with, uh, this drought, that, uh, I think it would be highly unlikely that they would ever think about a, a new connection, even informally at this point. But that's a good point, and we need to go back and maybe just, uh, remind the city council as to some of the things that they need to clean up in terms of, of, uh, of, of water issues. I know a lot is, a lot of emphasis and a lot of, uh, activity is being placed on the water contingency. Sorry, water, yeah, water contingency committee. And, um, and, and they got a lot of work to do. Hopefully they'll get organized and start looking at some of those things. But thank you for bringing it up. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to, if there's no other public comment, which I don't see, I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any additional comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Stock.
The water committee needs to get in gear. So Trevor, you need to tell, I'm gonna make a motion that they need to get in gear. And, you know, maybe a couple of meetings like we have, you know, to get the plan done, to get it going. It's an issue with the drought now. We're, I don't know, thirteen inches or fourteen inches behind normal. So that's my comment. And is this the LAFCO map, Trevor? The one that was attached to our packet? Okay.
I, I found that the, um, color map online, but it's a lot easier to, uh, understand, so.
Well, and the figure maps that figure five and figure one that Trevor made us, they're great. I, I like those a lot.
I, I had Gabe print this packet. And they don't have a color printer up in Trinidad, so.
Nice paper, though. Really thick paper.
I noticed heavy weight as well, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out why I had so many pieces stuck together, but it apparently was not the case.
So, Paula, if you want these maps, you know, they have some in the, in the city hall, but it's really a mess right now. It's totally dug up. You can't park there, school's in session. So, you know, like Richard said, you might want to just go to the website. It's incredible. It's all ripped up, the whole side of that street.
Lots of construction.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, moving on to our next agenda item, which is commissioner reports, any reports from any of the commissioners?
Just have, uh, did a trail committee meeting last night, I guess it was. And just, just high, high level summary for everybody, uh, working to unify the signage. There's going to be a few of us doing a survey of existing trail signs to kind of understand where do we are and what the needs are. The committee recommended removal of those temporary barricades that were installed at the beginning of COVID. You know, the, the street sign, public works ones that have some things stapled to them. But encouraging the city to put some best practice stuff out there to help people be good human beings with the upcoming tour season. And then there's also a, an update to the sign on Trinidad Head coming, uh, with some inclusion of, um, cultural context for the Chirai, uh, creation story, that kind of stuff that looks pretty interesting. And they, they had a really nice draft version that just got sent out. So some, some progress.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Stockness?
Yep, I have a question for Aaron. So is the Trails Committee going to do any kind of a sign for Trinidad Head, or is that up to the rancheria?
I'm not sure if we're talking about the same sign. There's that one very weathered one that is, is what being, is being worked on right now.
The one that stands up, that's on like a, a workbench. I'm not a workbench, but a, you know, that holds up boards. Anyway, yesterday, I drove back and I went around the beach, you know, down to where the Memorial Lighthouse is. And there was an express camper van going up the head. So I parked at the bottom and just watched, and these two ladies turned around and came down the head. I mean, they were just a little bit past the STR. So I followed him. I followed him to the market. I got out of the car because I'm Deputy Diane. And I said, oh, did you see the sign? For the trail? No, we passed it. And then we knew we shouldn't have been, been up here. So I called the city today. And Ryan from Public Works was there. So he said that it is the rancheria that puts the sign up for the trail going up Trinidad Head. So Aaron, what I'm asking you is mention this to the Trails Committee. And, you know, maybe get on the rancheria because we got all these people coming into town with their RVs and their visitor services, and that's fine, you know, they can come in, but they don't know the rules. And if the sign isn't big enough that says no driving, only walking on Trinidad Head, it was, it was pretty scary. And two, two younger ladies, not, I mean, probably, I don't know what age, but they thanked me. And I said, yeah, you gotta really read the signs and we do need more signs in town. So that's my trail story.
Sure. No, overall, that's definitely a goal, is to try and get things unified and, and enhanced and keep it visually pleasing though still as well, not have a tree forest of signs obstructing our beautiful views.
But that sign going up the head is very tiny. It's way too small.
Okay.
And, and Google Maps shows that as a road, and I think the city has requested that they take that off of there.
Been that way for a long time.
No success, yeah.
Richard, get on it. Richard, you can get on it. Come on.
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, figure out how we, uh, hack into Google Maps and get rid of that. Commissioner Hopkins, Hopkins, you have a comment?
Um, well, I just, I just reached out to the Ancestral Society and went to, attended their meeting and met all those folks, and I found them very just wonderful people, learned a lot about the area. I would highly recommend it to anybody. I mean, I've been here for twenty years and I didn't even know some of the stuff. And, uh, one of them was that, the management plan, which was good and I'm looking that over. But Trevor, I was cur- curious, there, there was talk about a policy sixty-nine. And where does that fit into the general plan? Uh-oh. Sorry.
I, no, I think that's, I think that's great. Um, and I I do think that, you know, their interpretation of the management plan and what it means and how it should interact with city documents is a little overblown. I don't find the management plan super useful. It's more of a plan for a plan. But policy sixty-nine specifically, and, and there's some other issues with the management plan. It, it was kind of done behind closed doors without a lot of staff or public input, but policy sixty-nine is an existing general plan policy, and it's, you know, we've had, and, and it's going to be, it's going to be a big sticky situation when we update the general plan. It, it, you know, our, um, a past city attorney has said, made the opinion that it's actually not enforceable because it gives, I think it says, uh, descendants of the village and the Trinidad Rancheria. So it doesn't include the Euroc, but it does include the Trinidad Rancheria, although the TAS want to exclude the Rancheria from, say, the management plan. It gets messy when dealing with multiple tribes. But it gives them veto authority over any projects within the Chirai Study area zoned open space. Now, you also have to be careful of what is called the Chirai City Area because the management plan calls the twelve and a half acres that was given to the city by the Coastal Conservancy and that the Coastal Conservancy holds an easement over. Management plan calls that the Chirai City Area, but that is not the Chirai Study Area as mapped in the general plan. And so I call it the, the Chirai Management Area, just to differentiate it because it's not legally mapped, you know, in the city's LCP as such. So it's, um, it's not as clean and nice as it might seem on the surface.
Yeah. And, but I didn't even see where I could find it on the website.
So if you go to, um, let's see, the management plan used to be on the website. I don't know if it still is.
It's called with just the management plan?
The Chirai Management Plan.
Okay, so I've found, I found that.
So the Chirai Management Plan, yeah, it's there. Policy sixty-nine, if you go to the general plan box on the documents library.
Yeah.
And you go the bottom one, general plan, current. And you go to the, like, the nineteen seventy-eight general plan. The condensed version is the easiest one to look at. You can scroll through there. That, that's the currently certified, adopted general plan. And you can find policy sixty-nine in there.
And that's, that's different than the, the management, the other management plan, right? That's, that's a, an agreement with the city and the coastal commission and the tribe or in the society. Is that correct?
Well, I, again, it's, I think there's some gray area. When the city council adopted the management plan, they made it very clear that they were only adopting it because it was non-binding. And that it was an advisory document, but there's some question as to how binding it is on the city.
So the coastal commission really doesn't have any binding authority?
The coastal commission was not, was not a party in the development of that plan.
Okay.
It was the Coastal Conservancy.
Oh.
It's not certified as part of any, you know, um, land use documents.
All right, thank you. Okay, there was some good stuff. They, they talk about trails a lot and, you know, they, I didn't realize they were all old ancestral trails. And now they're all tourist trails.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, I think that's really great and, you know, any, I would encourage you maybe if you want to participate maybe in, in some meetings in, in the future, you might, because it's, we've just, it, it's very difficult working with them. They do not trust staff or the city, and so it's very difficult to make progress. And so if we could build just a little bit of trust and, you know, just by you going to the meeting and developing that relationship, that could go a, a real, real long way. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping, you know, with the OPC grant and, and some other things that we're trying to do, that we can make some progress towards working with them. As opposed to, it seems like we're kind of always working at odds.
So Tom, you need to go for that. You need to go. We're gonna count on you. Go.
Yeah, I'll, I'll gladly do it.
Okay. Okay.
Cherry Heights, I know that there's some discussions, communication difficulties there too. However, however, to help, I'm, I'm, I like, you know, they're good people. We're all trying to work together here, be neighbors. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Next item is staff report. Anything to report, Trevor?
I expect, um, some, some revisions to the civic clubs plans for the lighthouse at the next meeting. I mean, next week, and so that should be on the next meeting. Other than that, um, I'm just working through, um, some SB two stuff as I can, the general plan stuff. I'm planning on getting started on the wall. Um, I'm planning on getting started on the water ordinance to implement the drought contingency plan. Just doing, doing as much as I can. We're, we're short staffed on planners, so I don't really have anyone to help me much right now. Um, just a little bit here and there, so.
Well, thank you for one hundred and twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Um, next item is future agenda items. We don't normally, uh, mention these, but, uh, I did get an inquiry, uh, this week regarding the, uh, West Haven, um, Intertie. And, uh, it got me thinking a little bit. We have these items on our future agenda item list, and they've been there for some time, and there's nothing wrong with that. And I know that, uh, you know, we have to prioritize what, what we have to do. Um, but, uh, maybe in the next month or so, we can kind of formulate, what we believe is the path forward on these two items. Meaning, um, yeah, we know that there are issues, but, uh, what do we need to do to address them? Uh, who needs to participate? Um, what information do we need to get off top dead center, so to speak, and, and m- move on with these? Or figure out what we have to do, or whatever? Um, so, um, and I appreciate any input from any other commissioners in terms of what you believe. For example, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, the sirens on the northern part of Humboldt County all failed at the last, uh, at the last test. And, you know, that's kind of a disappointing thing, uh, but understandable. But, uh, not that that necessarily fits in with the tsunami siren update, but I think it's something we just need to be mindful of. So maybe we can collectively think of what we need to do. Um, I, I offer up to, uh, uh, West Haven that maybe they would like to do some sort of, uh, briefing to the Planning Commission. I'm not sure that the Planning Commission is really where, uh, this needs to get started, but, um, it's something, maybe we could get some guidance from you too, Trevor.
Yeah, I think, um, I was gonna ask, um, how the tsunami siren test came out, so that's interesting. So I'm sure others are working on that. So that might be, yeah, I think this was on here because the rancheria we had approved them putting it up on the pole again. Um, and so that's sort of in the rancheria's hands, but then it not working is really another issue. And so hopefully some updates will come out of OES, I assume was, was who was heading that. Um, the Intertie, I think where we sort of left it is that it's not particularly a planning commission issue, but that we keep it on there as a reminder. And if the council didn't take it up, you know, the, the Planning Commission, you know, could hear a presentation, maybe make a recommendation to the city council. Um, I also think it might be an issue that, um, you know, you could recommend that the Water Committee, um, review. So some of that, you know, water stuff might be a little bit on hold, waiting for, for this Water Committee.
Yeah.
But I'm, you know, I don't know. You know, it's hard to interpret the, the breadth of, you know, what the Water Committee is intended to be talking about. I think, you know, it's defined so broadly. That, I, you know, I, I hope the council gives them maybe a little bit more direction, or maybe they're supposed to come up with their own priorities, but, um, you know, and they, they, they took all the professional staff off of it. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the committee is intended to be doing.
Okay. Well, um, all right. Again, like I said, we usually don't discuss this, but it's nice just to keep them there, and we'll see what we can do with the Water Committee. Uh, did I see a hand up, uh?
We, we made a list for the Water Committee. You know, and for what needs to be done from fix the leaks, look at storage, you know, all of that. They just, we just need to talk to the city council and tell them, you know, we made the list. Steve Madrone was all in there. It's there. They just can't play around. We gotta get going. You gotta get tanks. We gotta get the leaks fixed, you know, and then there are people that want water, and the Coastal Commission wants these people to have water, so. Anyway, we'll just, I'll challenge them and tell them to get it going, because they're making us do the plan, and they make it the contingency plan. They want us to get the general plan done. I have one more thing. The tsunami siren. Can I call Shirley Laos and ask her what the rancheria is? Do they have any ideas?
If, if you wanna try and contact Shirley and see if she's.
Well, yeah, because what I wanted to do was I wanted to tell her my story about the car going up the road. And, you know, Ryan and Angela today, when I called the city, said it's the rancheria's issue, and I just want to tell them that it's kind of scary, you know, that they're gonna drive up there, and they don't see a big sign that says walking only. So, anyway, I was gonna give her, give her a call, because she hasn't been at any of our meetings lately.
No, she hasn't.
You know.
Isn't there a gate at the bottom of that road?
No, well, the, not when you leave the beach and go by the lighthouse, and then you get up to the top level, you know, and the STR is over here. And then you kind of make a turn and you start going up. I don't know. I'll have to ask my neighbor, because she walks every day. But I'm, I can't walk anymore.
The, it, it, by rights, that, that, uh, barrier should be way further down.
Right.
But that's, you know, that's a long-term thing we can work on. But, yeah, I agree, maybe.
Erin, Erin, take note.
And, yeah.
Down the gate.
And, and just.
Barrier at the state park.
I was just gonna add one quick thing for the Water Committee. I, I think the city engineer is also working on a, a grant, a state revolving fund loan. Um, I'm working with Public Works to develop a capital improvement plan. So, you know, that's really dealing with the technical aspects of the functioning of the, the current functioning of, of the water system and dealing with loss and pressure and valves and, you know, storage. Um, where I think the committee that the council's putting together is more water resiliency planning, so a little bit higher level. Looking at things. But again, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but.
And who's the engineer? What's his name?
Uh, well, it's, it's GHD, our, our engineer for, you know, Josh Wolfe is sort of the day-to-day engineer. But I, I don't.
Too much to do.
Water. I, I think it's really Patrick and, um, Steve Allen and Steve McKinney that work on the water system.
And they're the ones that did that report for us a couple of years ago. Okay.
Yeah, Patrick did, yeah. Okay, um, any other final comments before we close? Oh, hearing none. Uh, thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody's participation. And, uh, was kind of a lot of information to absorb, but hopefully we've given some clarification and direction to staff to move forward with the, uh, with the ADU ordinance. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, everybody.